So I've got my gavel. Calling the meeting to order, clerk, could you conduct the roll call?
Sure thing. Good morning, everybody. Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen? Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Jordy?
Here.
Supervisor Williams?
Here.
Chair hashtag.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to confirm that there was receipt of public expression.
Yes, public expression has all been received and it's to either public expression or the corresponding item.
Okay, so everyone can see it on their granicus or if they're on the internet and watching this? Is that correct?
Yes.
Can they see the correspondence?
Yes, it should be listed there under Public Expression, 3A.
So I'd like to just go down and and state where we got the correspondence, who sent it. So we received Al Stein letter, Marie Myers, Andrew Yazolino, Frank Spurlock, Jesse La Force, Kathleen Perry, Red Hamilton, Selah Sawyer, Sherry Schatmeyer, tax collector, Switzer correspondence and correspondence from the Mendocino Cannabis Alliance. Right? Since some of those are rather lengthy, I think that people can read them and they're accessible to the public. I'd also like to say that that staff has been doing an incredible job keeping this all together in very trying times and and so
Mr. Chair?
We are moving to a new format hopefully next week, but as soon as staff can get it going. Granicus eComment is an online tool that makes participation easy and convenient for constituents and staff simultaneously. People can review agenda item details and indicate their position on an item in detail from any device. This results in save staff time with elected officials getting a better view of public sentiment. You know, certainly these are all difficult and new times we're in, and so I think staff is trying the very best they can to make the public comments as easily accessible to us and also make it transparent, make sure that we're adhering to the Revised Brown Act requirement.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to note there, at least of what I'm looking at with the agenda, there was more attachments under public expression, so I didn't want anyone to think that theirs was not there.
Okay, yeah, I was on item 5A, there's some duplicate. So, thank you Supervisor Brown. I also see correspondence from like Kathleen Perry, Celeste Beck, Shawna Brott, Cody Cinnamon, Roger Kruger, Tim Fish. I think Al Stein, I already said, Dave Stewart, James Switzer and Selah Sawyer, I already said, so. Is there any others that you see? Or the lodging operators, COVID-19 Response Team correspondence and business stimulus recommendations? Are there any others that you see Supervisor Brown?
No, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8A, which is the sponsor is County Council. County Council, are you on the line?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I turn it over to Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy and Trent Taylor, I just would like to give a brief introduction to the item. First of all, my, this is, this is an off-agenda item. So before it can be considered, the board would need to vote to make a determination that emergency situation exists and the items related to the emergency situation, I believe you have the factual basis for that. But if you, if you want to take the up, the item up, first that vote needs to occur. Just very briefly, the, the item that is in front of you and I believe it's been uploaded, but we had a little bit of a technical glitch yesterday, so if anyone doesn't have a copy, I'm going to ask my staff to, to make sure that it gets uploaded and sent out now. The, the item is an urgency ordinance that would make a violation of the health officer orders, a violation of a Mendocino County ordinance. The purpose for that would be to assist in the enforcement efforts by allowing code enforcement in addition to local law enforcement, including the sheriff and the HHSAs Special Investigations Unit, to be assisting in the enforcement effort. Because code enforcement are not peace officers, they're not currently able to enforce the order and their, their ability to engage in enforcement depends upon the county's administrative remedy system and currently the health officer orders do not fit under that system. So let me, let me turn the item over to Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy, who will be presenting along with Trent Taylor.
Good morning, Board. This is Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So as, as Christian already introduced this item, I won't redo the introduction. I can either, because this is off calendar, because we've done this at the, at the last minute, I don't know how much you've had a chance to read through the whole thing. I thought that I could either answer your questions, or I could go through and give you a brief review of the major elements of the proposed ordinance. Chair, which?
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Supervisor?
I believe, I believe we have to by motion make the appropriate findings and add the item to the agenda, then we can hear the item. Thank you.
Right. I was just going to check with County Council on that. So County Council, it seems like the way to proceed with is to vote on whether we're going to hear this as an urgent item?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I feel moved, Mr. Chair.
Very good. It's been moved by Supervisor Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay Supervisor Williams, second. Okay, we're going to vote on this.
Chair, Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a comment on the motion. The, the item is not live on our website and I'd request that as soon as possible that it be uploaded to the county website so that we can read what we're voting on.
It was on my granicus.
I'm looking at the county website. It's not on the county website.
Okay. Clerk, can you get it on the, the website?
There's a delay in the technology, so it is actually being pushed to the web. It just takes a few minutes. If you have it and I legislate on your iPads, it is making its way to the web. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may make a suggestion, if, if it would help, we could certainly trail this item to the, to later in the meeting so that everyone has a little bit of time.
It should be there now. If you'd please refresh.
Supervisor Jordy, do you see it?
Mr. Chair?
Let's see Supervisor Jordy?
I just refreshed three more times and it's still not on the website.
Okay, why don't we come back to this then? Since we can deal with this later.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes Supervisor McCowen?
We do have a motion on the floor to make the appropriate findings, to add it to the agenda, and then I agree we could come back to it later in the meeting, but we should deal with the motion on the floor probably.
Okay, that sounds fine. Okay Supervisor Jordy, are you all right with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to vote on this, whether to take this urgent item up. So we'll go to Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jordy?
Yes.
And Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
And Supervisor hashtag, yes. Okay, so we'll take this up, but we'll take it up at a later time. We'll move on to Agenda Item 6A. Okay, and 6A is Discussion and Possible Action Including Suspension Until Further Notice of Any Nonessential Items That Are Not Necessary For County Business To Continue, That Are Not Directly Related To The COVID-19 Crisis, And That Are Not Consent Calendar. So this is the sponsors, our supervisors hashtag and Brown. We brought this forward because we're in a time of crisis and we see staff as very overwhelmed by doing, working 16-hour days and we don't need to be, you know, we need to deal with the business at hand, keeping our county safe and and so anything that's not essential to running the county or dealing with COVID-19 or just of non-controversial nature should be put off. And Supervisor Brown, would you like to add something to that?
Yes, I would, and I want to thank you for asking me to co-sponsor. And when asked, it seemed like the right thing and the right action to take. However, I've really been thinking about this ever since and since it's been posted. And what I've been thinking about is constituent services, concerns of the county taking care of business in a timely manner and other business with mandated deadlines and legal processes that are already underway. I do realize we, we tabled as a board an item on one of our last agendas with the moratorium on hemp and, but yet we had everything ready. Everybody had, you know, read the comment. But I think it was a reaction to the seriousness of the crisis we are now in. But before I go forward on this, and there might be some language we want to change because I feel it might be a bit confusing, but I would very much like to hear from staff and their recommendations as to this item.
All right, are there any other comments from the supervisors before we turn it over to staff?
I have a comment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'll go in order now. I'll go Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support Supervisor Brown's comments. I think as we take all of the necessary actions with, to address this emergency and staff is doing a tremendous amount of work on this. But as we deal with the disaster, we also have to look forward to the recovery. So I don't think we can have a blanket directive that we will take up such a limited range of items. So I think all of us, as well as staff, are acutely aware of the need to be judicious with staff time. But I think there are any range of items, all of which we can't foresee right now, that do need our attention, that we do need to consider. But a condition, a precondition of, of doing so, I would say, we have to get our technology straightened out so that the public does have an opportunity to call in and voice their public comments in real time. So I think we're only going to be dealing with COVID on April 7th. Hopefully by our next meeting, if there are items of business that are important to maintain the long-term functioning of the county government and our businesses and the public, then I think we need to consider them. So I, I don't support the item. I think, again, we're all aware of the, the critical emergency that we're responding to. And I think we'll be very judicious in bringing anything forward. If staff is concerned about the burden that it may place to bring it forward, they can communicate that to the individual supervisors and to you, Mr. Chair. And I think the agenda will be adjusted accordingly. Thank you.
Supervisor Jordy?
I'd like to hear from staff how they intend to implement it because like we've supervisor McCowen that we need to be focused on the recovery from the COVID crisis, not just the crisis itself.
Okay, and we'll go, let's hear from Supervisor Williams and then we'll go to staff.
I certainly support the intention, but I don't, I think the language is too vague. I can't imagine any supervisors bringing nonessential items forward at this point. I think we can leave it to discretion. And as McCowen said, the discussion between staff and sponsoring supervisors ought to be enough of a check.
All right, and, oh, I see that Congressman Huffman is on the line, so. Good morning. Let's, um, let's hear from Congress, can we stop this right now? And we'll hear from Congressman Huffman and then we'll come back to it. Is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Okay, good morning Congressman Huffman.
Well, good morning supervisors. It's great to be with all of you. I hope the broadband connections are holding up in Mendocino County today.
So far, we're, we're on it, so.
Good, good, good. Well, I am at your service. I certainly am prepared to give you a little bit of a rundown of some of the things that Congress has already done in response to this COVID-19 crisis. Also happy to talk about what is likely to be a fourth and fifth potentially wave of legislation in the weeks ahead.
Very good. So do you want to start off with what's going on? You know, it seems to me that a lot's been done on the economic front. And what we're really seeing is that on the county level, we're not getting the health preparation. We're not getting the personal protective equipment. We're not getting the ventilators. We're not getting the tests. And so what can Congress do about that?
Well, you're, you're correct. I think a lot of the, the action, the legislating has been on the broader economic fallout of this crisis. But in fact, the, the very first thing Congress did, and this was weeks ago, was pass $8.3 billion of supplemental funding that is all about what you just described. I think the problem is that we were woefully unprepared at the federal agencies that are supposed to have us ready for a pandemic like this. And you know all about the mishandling by the CDC of testing protocols and approvals. So we've been playing catch-up, but it's not for lack of funding. Congress has allocated that funding.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I'll go through the supervisors, see if there's any questions directly to you. So Supervisor Jordy?
Thank you Congressman for joining us. I'm hoping that you could give us a little bit of a rundown of the legislation that the Congress passed and how it will affect the economy and hopefully help people in the economy.
Yeah, so it's, this is a big piece of legislation. It's $2 trillion and it also leverages even more than that when you look at some of the Federal Reserve resources that will be activated. And again, that's on top of two prior legislative actions in, in the previous two weeks. So a lot of resources. The good news, I think, from the Mendocino County perspective is that a substantial amount of that funding is going to be available for local governments, for healthcare providers, for nonprofits, certainly a lot of resources for small businesses, including independent contractors and gig workers who would not have been eligible for the conventional SBA type of support. So literally hundreds and hundreds of billions of dollars available. And the strategy for most of this is to try to retain payrolls. So what we're really trying to prevent are very broad layoffs. So a lot of the funding is available in terms of, by way of refundable tax credits and forgivable loans that will only be available if you hang on to your personnel.
Hey Supervisor Williams?
We've heard that the peak in California may come around the third week of April. Given that you're well-connected, could you share any estimates you may have heard on how long that healthcare may be overwhelmed? Are we talking about weeks?
Well, I think we're certainly talking about weeks in some locations and it's, it's just going to vary. Obviously, you know, Mendocino doesn't look nearly as dire as Los Angeles right now. Marin County is punching above its weight. It's got a lot of cases relative to its population, significantly more than Sonoma County, which is one of the size, for example. Humboldt County, to your north, has a few more cases than Mendocino. So I think every, every location is going to, to vary to some extent. And the job is to make sure everybody's working together so that hospitals are pooling ICU bed resources and PPEs and other things that can go to the areas of the highest need. But, but I think in, in terms of rough projections of peak, I'm hearing the same thing you're hearing Supervisor.
Thank you.
Very good. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome. Sir, I'm glad that you're here with us. I'm going to ask a little bit different question, and this is also an item that we have on our agenda to address later in this meeting. But other business before the federal government, such as tax returns, we know that there is an extended deadline with that. But however, other business such as public comment on proposed regulation, I haven't seen any of these processes suspended yet. So what is the thinking of Congress and the departments, certainly in the crisis we're in, in extending these deadlines?
Supervisor, it's a good question. So if there is some NEPA process and there's a window of public comment that is pending, I have not heard of any sort of categorical extensions. I think it may be a case-by-case situation, as it, as it often is, where the lead agency has discretion to extend that public comment period. What I can do is offer my assistance. If, if, if you or constituents are in that situation, I'm happy to join you in requesting that whatever federal agency is the lead agency provide that extension for obvious reasons.
And, and I appreciate hearing that, and I think you know I have one very much on my mind that is a big concern. And that has to do with the Potter Valley Project before the federal regulatory commission.
Yeah, so obviously I'm going to defer to the planning group parties. You are one of those parties Supervisor. And if it is the consensus of the planning group that an extension is needed and warranted, I'll, I'll happily join that request and we'll hope that, that that will be accommodated.
Thank you.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you for joining us Congressman Huffman. Two questions. I think I've heard that some of the relief such as enhanced unemployment checks could be flowing within three or four weeks. Is that realistic? And secondly, what is the mechanism for, for delivering assistance to the counties? What method of allocation is there that you're aware of and what would the timing be?
So with respect to the unemployment, you're right, there's a great effort to try to speed this up. And so the typical waiting period before you can start drawing unemployment benefits has been waived. The benefits have been plus up very generously. Nobody will get less than $600 a week in unemployment benefits. And then there's all the other benefits that I referenced that are intended to keep you on payroll. All kinds of unprecedented ways in which small businesses and nonprofits and, and others can actually draw down federal money and if they maintain their payroll and have very substantial loans totally forgiven if they hang on to their employees. So there's a lot there and we will, my office will provide all the resources to answer questions for anyone in that situation. Now, in terms of the local government funding Supervisor, it's a little bit of bad news for counties less than 500,000. It, it's great for Sonoma County that they are 503,000. That gives them a direct line to request their local government funding from the Department of Treasury. But for any local government entity less than 500,000, you have to go through the state. And I, I wish it were otherwise, but for administrative purposes, the administration felt like that was the only way to do it. So you're going to have to work through the state. The good news is there's a lot of funding available and I hope there'll be enough there to, to backfill Mendocino County's need relative to this crisis.
And any information or a estimate on timing for that process? And again, thank you very much for being here and for the information you're giving us.
So as with several of the programs that were just enacted literally a few days ago, the IRS or Treasury, as the case may be, will be putting out guidelines and they hope to have that complete in a matter of days. We're going to get them to you as soon as we have them.
Thank you.
All right, and CEO Angelo, do you have any questions or comments for Congressman Huffman?
Thank you, Chair hashtag. I would just like to thank Congressman Huffman for always supporting Mendocino County. We know you're there and for being with us today. At this time, I, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you Congressman Huffman. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, just a, a big thanks to all of you for continuing to work through a difficult time. And we, we all have a lot of constituents who are going through great hardship and there's a tremendous amount of need. So I appreciate the, the way in which we're working together to hopefully get everybody through.
Well, thank you for your support and
Mr. Chair?
I know you do a lot of traveling and so, you know, stay out of airplanes as much as possible. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. Representative Huffman, if we do have these concerns, which office, which contact should we use that we can call directly if, if more issues come up?
So Sheba Brown, right there in Yucaya. She, you know, as, as you know, splits time between the Yucaya and Fort Bragg office, but we will get right back to you and we want to be a resource for you on all of these things.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much for your time this morning or after.
Thanks supervisors. Stay safe.
You too. So going back to staff now about item 6A. And so CEO Angelo, would you like to say anything about this agenda item?
Thank you Chair hashtag. I appreciate your efforts and I appreciate the agenda item. I think that, at, you know, I, I have to say I'm a little speechless on this item because I know what staff does and I know how many staff are available. And I, I figured that the board did too. You know, at this point, we are in the process of looking at 30 days ahead of us here. And the next seven days will be critical for us to continue to surge up in response. I think it's, it's difficult when you don't see people around you that are, you know, getting sick or getting hospitalized. And, you know, it's the same issue that I believe Dr. Doohan has with the shelter-in-place order that it's difficult when the sun is shining and the weather is beautiful and, and people want to go outside. And you don't, you don't see people ill or certainly are numbers have been low. But we know that our numbers of COVID have been low because Mendocino County has just recently received test kits. Not to get into this, this will be Dr. Duen's presentation, but my point is that, that all of the resources within this county right now are to continue to provide services and to respond to COVID-19. This is the first time I would say in 26 years in government that 12 years in public health in another county, that this is the one time that we really, really, every single one of us is at risk. And so the, the issue is not so much, you know, should we or should we not put on items that are pertinent to COVID-19? You know, Governor Newsom's budget this year, his direction to his budget team is that they only focus on bare essentials, what the services are going forward, and the only additions to that budget will be related to COVID-19. We'll probably be doing the same thing. My point is that it, I, it may come a time when it doesn't really matter what we want on this agenda and what we don't want on the agenda. It will be whether we have an agenda at all. And as dire as that sounds, and as ridiculous to some of you as that sounds, our number one response right now is really to save lives. And that may sound very dramatic to some of you, but honestly, that's what we're trying to do. So even sitting here in this board meeting right now, there are actions that we need to prepare for the next seven to 30 days that we aren't doing because we're sitting in this meeting, which of course is our duty. My point is that whether this item is approved or not, it, it may not even matter because we will be able to do what our capacity holds. And if you were in this boardroom right now, you would see that there are five of us. And let's hope next Tuesday, there are five of us, and the Tuesday after that, and the Tuesday after that. So whether this item goes or not Supervisor hashtag, on behalf of my staff and myself, I appreciate your efforts and your support to us. And we can, we'll see what we can do. That's where we are. So thank you.
Well, thank you CEO Angelo. And is there anyone else from staff who would like to talk about this? Okay. Seeing that, I think you articulated that very well. And I'm just thinking about, you know, the forecasting that we have. And, you know, we have the ad hoc, the cannabis cultivation ad hoc committee bringing back the recommendations. We have Supervisor McCowen with changes to the cannabis ordinance. And we, we had, we had the Hispanic workshop that was put off. We had the EMS workshop that was put off. You know, we have some critical issues, but we also have some things. If we want to spend three hours next week talking about cannabis and the ordinance, then that's going to be taking time away from staff. And I don't think staff really has the time right now to deal with those kind of issues. I don't think it's fair to them. And I certainly, you know, I, I think we're, staff is overwhelmed at this point and we don't need to be doing this to them. I don't, well, I think there's some ways we could all, we could change this, the proposal, but, you know, we could vote on issues that come up and the chair, the chair could kind of make a list of, of items that might be coming up and we could vote on whether we want to deal with those. But we need a motion from the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Yes Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, the, the questions I asked, I suppose they were answered, but what I'm hearing, are, are we delaying business with deadlines that have not been suspended by state or federal government? Representative Huffman? Are we delaying important projects like from planning and building that have deadlines or been publicly noticed? You know, what are the legal processes that we have going on? But I haven't heard this from anyone if, if this is gonna create an issue.
The first part of the, the item was that, that we would only deal with items that are necessary, essential items that are necessary for county business to continue. So if it was an item such as you're talking about with the deadline, we would certainly be able to consider that.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Christian Curtis, acting county counsel. So first of all, I was a little bit too slow in reaching for my microphone before. I did want to say that on behalf of my own department, I do want to echo CEO Angelo's comments with respect to just sort of the limits of our resources and what we're able to do during this time, and certainly appreciating the support of the board on, on that front. To, to answer some of Supervisor Brown's concerns, I, I don't want to speak too broadly for all departments, but I do know that we have been advising on the legal deadlines and assisting departments in getting extensions where appropriate, either through tolling agreements, through other means. And additionally, there are requests that are pending in front of the governor for, for extensions of time. I don't, I don't know that I had understood this item and ultimately that's up to the board to mean that anything with a pending deadline would simply be ignored, but rather that appropriate extensions of time or other mechanisms might be sought to, to, to allow resources to be repurposed to the emergency where possible.
Thank you County Counsel.
Question.
So it's back to the board. Yes Supervisor Williams.
So what I'm hearing is no matter what we do today, we're likely to have the same outcome. I haven't heard from the CEO that we, that supervisors are asking for non-essential items to be on the agenda. So I don't see that we're solving a problem at hand. The only non-essential item I've seen is the very one we're discussing now. And so I, I would, I would, I would ask my colleagues to, to table this and what we have in place today is working. Yeah, if, if you have an item that's non-essential, please don't put it on the agenda.
Well, we have, we have two items coming up about cannabis and so are those non-essential?
Though it's up to the supervisors who are sponsoring those items. I would hope that they would use their discretion to pull those items if non-essential. But I don't think we can make a blanket policy. It'll, it'll, the next, the next phase will be arguing about did a particular item meet the bar that we just said that's terribly vague? I think this is a, this is a non-essential item that we're discussing at this point. Good intention, well, understand the spirit, fully support it. Don't think we can, we can steer the future based on a vote today.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
Supervisor Jordy, I would support the resolution if it was clarified that county staff in a very limited capacity would also be working on the economic recovery of the crisis and not just the crisis itself.
This is Supervisor McCowen. I support Supervisor Williams' comments. I think all of the comments made are valid and I do thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisor Brown for bringing the item forward. I think the points are all well taken, the comments from CEO Angelo, County Counsel Curtis. But I also think we're all mindful of the situation that we're in. And we're not going to attempt to load up the agenda with things that are non-essential. And certainly the coming three or four weeks are going to be critical. So anything that I've put on forecasting, I would request that it be put on hold pending further discussion with staff about what is appropriate timing and is it feasible to bring items forward? So I think we're all very mindful of the situation and I think the agenda item's been a good reminder, but I think we can leave it at that and there's really no need to act on it. Thank you.
All right. So seeing that there's probably not a motion coming from this, I would certainly hope that we all are very aware of the load on staff, the lack of community input into decision making at this point, and, and that we limit any kind of item to just essential items, please. So, thank you. We'll move on to, can we go back to item 8A, County Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If, if the board has had some time to look at this, I can get Deputy County, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm hearing some, oh. If, if the board has had time to, to look at the item, I can ask Deputy County Counsel Michael McAtee to join us and we can proceed with the presentation.
Okay Supervisor Jordy, have you been able to look at it? Has it been uploaded?
I was briefly looking at it on my phone, but haven't studied it yet.
Okay. Well, let's go forward with the presentation from Deputy County Counsel.
And I, I believe he is stepping in, in, in front of the camera right now. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, they may have lost their connection. Give us just one moment.
And just to let everyone know while we're waiting, is that we're supposed to also get a call in from Senator Mike McGuire. And so that should be around 10:00 or 10:30. And so we might break up whatever discussion we're having at that point. County Counsel?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. We're, we're having just a little bit of trouble getting them reconnected. If we could either move on to another item or take a short break, we'll, we'll, we'll be ready in just a few minutes here.
Yeah, we can move on to another item. We have people. Okay, so we're going to move on to item 5A, which is discussion and possible action including an update associated with the novel coronavirus COVID-19, including possible direction regarding essential services in Mendocino County, including operational preparation and response, and an update on county continuity of operations and services. So the sponsor is the Executive Office, CEO Angelo. Would you like to speak to this?
Thank you Chair hashtag. This is our, our item of the day. It's rather lengthy, so I just as a point of order of this item, we have it, we have it scheduled to go in a particular order so that it, it, it flows better for the board and the public as far as all the activities that we are doing. You'll have Dr. Duen who will do a public health officer update to this board. There was a request by the supervisors, I'm going to say at the last meeting, for change history on the public health order, and our Chief Counsel Curtis will be doing that. As this board knows, the, the structure of the incident at this point is that Lieutenant Shannon Barney is our emergency operations manager. And so he will be talking about the EOC and some of the activities. And please remember that how this works is you have an event and the EOC supports that event with the resources. The event is a public health event. So it is, we have public health in the EOC. Public health, of course, is in Health and Human Services. So we do have a countywide response on this event. We have a very robust public information team with Deputy CEO Sarah Duquette and our consultant Liz Barney. And they've been doing a great job reaching out to social media, trying to respond to questions and concerns, and then of course assisting Dr. Duen with videos and press releases. And this team has really stepped up and has kept us on task as far as the timeframe that we've given to the public. When we get a positive, we would do a press release. And so they've, they've held us to that and they've stepped up on the weekends and such to do these press releases for us. What's really important throughout the whole process is continuity of operations. So basically, what are those essential services that we can keep going? And so that's what you'll see with our continuity of operations plan. And Mr. Nash Gonzalez has been responsible for that. Additionally, you can't run a, you can't run a county or an organization, and then certainly an organization that's responding to a pandemic without having, having your human resources department really fully engaged. And our HR Director William Schertz has been assisting us in responding and writing procedures and policies as quickly as he can in response to COVID-19. I believe I'd mentioned to this board that we had one meeting and one phone conference with the labor groups. Our goal is that we all work together in the response and it has been great so far. And human resources has been instrumental in getting all that done. This weekend, we spent a lot of time on homeless issues and the, trying to get the, trying to get the homeless services and the process and the actual structure, you'll hear about that today. And so you will hear from Becky Emery, who is leading the advanced planning in the Emergency Operations Center. And Becky was responsible for developing the isolation and quarantine plan for homeless persons. Additionally, Health and Human Services under the leadership of Tammy Moss Chandler has been responsible for homeless services. And HHSA has done, they have done a lot of activities in support of the health and safety of homeless persons and obviously the community. And so you'll hear from Tammy Moss Chandler. And the thing to remember is homeless services existed before COVID-19. With COVID-19, part of the response is an isolation and quarantine plan for homeless services. Where this all intersects is when a homeless person, whether they've been in services with HHSA or not, is identified as needing isolation or quarantine. And then that person becomes part of the isolation and quarantine plan that we have for homelessness, which you will hear from Becky and from Tammy today. Additionally, I would like to say that over the weekend, I was asked to get involved in an effort around the homeless encampment in the city of Ukiah. And what I would like to do and what I have been doing since the weekend is working with the city manager in Ukiah to try to develop a plan for response for that homeless encampment, which is in the city. It's the one that's near Airport Park Boulevard. And so we will be working together with Camille Schrader as our homeless services contractor to develop a plan. And that plan is in response to that encampment and what we can do with that encampment. You know, at this point, it's, it's not whether it's a city problem or a county problem, it's a problem. And so how do we deal with it? Because it's a problem regarding the health and safety of the public, the full public in this area. So I will be working with the city manager and with our largest contractor to develop a plan and review the plan. And then my goal is to bring that plan to the Board of Supervisors for either approval or not approval. So what you're hearing me say is that multiple, multiple resources are going into homeless services and the response to homeless, to the homeless issue, and then also the response to homeless and COVID-19. And you'll hear more about that today. Additionally, there, all of you have had questions about the economics and the finances, not only of this county, but our community and the business community. Again, we have put the, we, we have contracted with West and EDFC to be our economic business arm. And so Mary Ann Petrello and Mr. Dunnecliff will give an update. Is it enough? No, but it's a start and we are open to taking any recommendations from this board. Again, I'll say that right now, and you'll hear from Dr. Duen here in, in a short time, but right now, the next but right now, the next 14 to 28 days are critical as to what the, what will happen here in Mendocino County. We know about the Bay Area, we know that Sonoma County's numbers are growing, and we have been fortunate that we do not have major areas of cluster right now here in Mendocino County. Part of that is the good work of Dr. Duhon and the whole team, and also just timing. So the next 30 days are critical. And so what you'll hear is that we will be surging up, and then hopefully, by the end of April, we will not have had the impact that our neighbors have had. Ms. Michelle Hutchins from Mendocino County Schools will be giving you an update. Deputy CEO Darcy Antle will talk about finances, certainly the alternate care sites that we're working on. And our Sheriff will be talking about the Coroner Mortuary Plan. We've already heard from Congressman Huffman, and Senator McGuire should be calling in anytime. So we have a full lineup. My goal was to get through this by noon today, 1 o'clock at the latest, because we all have work that we have to get back to. Anyway, at this point, I don't know where we are in the timing with our County Council and the technology. I don't know if we're moving to County Council on this item, or if we're going to move ahead on item 5A. Thank you.
My understanding is that County Council is available at this point to deal with item 8A. So maybe we should go back to that if County Council is ready and try to get that dealt with. County Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy.
Good morning again. This is Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy. Thank you for bearing with me. We had some technical problems connecting just a few minutes ago. I heard CEO Angelo say that we'd like to get through this quickly, and I'll try my best to get through this quickly. Because this is an urgency ordinance, and it has come at the last minute, I think it's important if I go through some of the matrix details about what's going on and what's being presented. As Acting County Counsel Curtis had mentioned earlier, this is an urgency ordinance. At the core of this, the purpose is to enable county staff to enforce the county health officer's orders by way of administrative citations. That's the essential point for what is being proposed right now. And it's long for a few reasons. One of them is because a couple of things need to happen in order to do that. In order to... Right now, we have an administrative citation chapter in our code 1.08. It allows us to do that, us to administer administrative citations. However, the authority that we are given to issue administrative citations has to be based on a violation of a county ordinance. And right now, the county health officer's orders are not ordinances that were delivered by the Board of Supervisors. So the first thing that this proposed ordinance does in Section 4 is it incorporates the county health officer's COVID-19 orders into county law by way of an ordinance, and that would be the first part of this ordinance. COVID-19 orders are defined in Section 3 as the county health officer's orders that are issued for the purpose of controlling the spread of COVID-19 virus, which reflects the Governor's Order, Executive Order N-2520, which essentially orders people in California to heed the orders of the local health officials. The second major part of this proposed ordinance is the enforcement part of it. It's the administrative citation. So in Section 5, we have the Violation and Enforcement section. And what this does is after it's already incorporated the health officer's orders, it says that a violation of those orders, which are now a county ordinance, shall be deemed a misdemeanor, a public nuisance, and a violation of this ordinance. And what that does is it then allows us to issue administrative citations for the violation of those orders. In this ordinance, we have proposed that the enforcement officer would be enforcing this. And if you go to the definitions, we've defined enforcement officer fairly, a little bit more broadly than it needs to be, we've given the authority to enforce this to the health officer, her designate. The code enforcement officers from the Division of Code Enforcement in the Department of Planning and Building, that's who we intend to be the primary people to enforce this. It also gives the authority to any peace officer with jurisdiction in our county and by anyone else that the board wishes to have that power by resolution. This proposed ordinance is non-exclusive, so any of the other current, the current remedies that you can enforce, the health officer's orders, are going to stay in place. So right now, the Sheriff has authority to enforce it by way of state code. Obviously, we've given the Sheriff and any other peace officer the ability to enforce it through this. But again, it's the staff that we are really giving the authority to enforce the health officer's orders, but it's at the county's sole discretion. So this is an optional remedy. And if we use it, it's not going to exclude any other remedy that's currently out there. Now, like I said, we have a code chapter 1.08 that already gives us the ability to issue administrative citations, and we have a whole process for how we deal with them. This has to be a little bit different because we're dealing with a health emergency where there's social distancing in place. And so, actually, I'm skipping ahead. No, I'm not. So we've developed a specific process to deal with this particular type of violation. And to point out some of the differences in what we currently have, instead of giving somebody the ability to appeal this to a hearing officer directly, we've created a two-step process. So if you go down to Section 7, some of it's the same. Every day that the violation exists is a new violation that can, a new citation can be issued. In our order right now, we often give people a notice of violation and give them a reasonable time to correct. In this particular case, we propose that reasonable time to be 24 hours. If we discover a violation, we would give a notice of violation and give them 24 hours to fix it. And if they didn't, then we would proceed with a citation, which carries the imposition of a penalty. The penalties themselves are in 7F and G, and this is a very important part of it because it says what the penalty is. And I did notice a typo in Section F. It should say, "The civil penalty for each violation involving a non-commercial activity." We divided it between non-commercial activities and commercial activities. And the reason we did that was because we thought that the penalty should reflect what's going on. And for commercial activities, obviously, they stand to make money from it. And in order to avoid the penalty being regulated to just the cost of doing business, we proposed a higher penalty. And as you can see, the penalty that we presented for non-commercial activity would be $500 per violation per day. And for commercial activity would be $10,000. Now, these are proposals. The Board of Supervisors can determine whether they believe that these are reasonable, whether they want to change them, and we can do that today. Another difference is, in our normal process, we give people 30 days to pay. But in this particular situation, since a lot of people are out of work, we've extended that to 90 days in Section 7F. Typically, the code enforcement officers also have the right to waive the penalty if it's complying within a reasonable amount of time or other factors. In this particular case, under 7I, we've given that authority to the Director of Emergency Services. And again, the board can designate whoever they wish to have that authority. Moving on to Section 8, the form is pretty much similar to what we currently have. I changed it to reflect what's going on specifically with COVID-19 orders and violations. The service procedures, however, we did change fairly significantly. Service is usually done by personal service by handing it to someone, but because we need to maintain a distance from people, I have changed personal service to allow for placing the documents down on the ground after getting the attention of the person being served, letting them know that the papers are for them. And if that person either picks up those papers or acknowledges that they understand that those papers are for them, then that would be effective personal service. In the absence of that, we usually go to a mailing. But in this case, because it's urgent, we went straight to posting and mailing so that we could have effective service one day after. And so the second way, if you can't affect personal service, would be to post it in a place that is reasonable for someone to see it coming onto the property, and then to mailing it by both... Actually, I can't remember whether I did both regular... At least to mail it by overnight mail, so that they would have it, hopefully, the very next day in addition to the posting on the property. And then the third way is by mail. But for just a pure mailing, that would take an extra five days to effectuate service. So ideally, the service would be either by personal, as defined herein, or by posting and mailing. Moving on to the procedure for the appeal itself, we also made some substantial changes to the way we usually process this. Usually, it goes straight to a hearing officer if somebody appeals the citation. Because we're trying to maintain social distancing, we wanted to present something that would get an interim, immediate determination without the need to gather, and then putting off the hearing until later. And the way that would work is that we'd give them 10 days to appeal as usually we give them. But instead of having that hearing set within 30 days of gathering, the papers that are presented in the appeal would be then presented to the county health officer, who is in the best position to interpret her own orders. And once we got the determination from the health officer as to whether, in fact, her order was violated or not, we could use that as an interim determination. If she decides that the order was not violated, then the county would drop the citation, remove whatever penalty was imposed, and the matter would be done with. If the health officer determined that, in fact, the order was violated, we would send that determination to the appellant, let them know that, give them an extra 10 days to tell us whether they wanted to go to hearing. If we didn't hear from them, or if they said that's fine and be done with it, then the matter would be settled. The final administrative order would be the health officer's determination. If they told us in writing within 10 days of notice of that determination that they wanted to have a hearing, we would then take that and set a hearing with the hearing officer at the earliest applicable time after the social distancing orders have been lifted. So that might be some time in the future, but we'll have already given them an initial determination by the health officer. And this is, again, to promote social distancing and also to give due process the best we can. Once that, if they do request the hearing, we've given them, you know, 15 days. We're going to give them 15 days' notice before that hearing is set. The hearing procedures are going to be exactly the same at the point we actually get to the hearing before a hearing officer, as typical. The administrative order will be similar, but again, specific to determining whether the COVID-19 orders were violated. The rest of this is pretty much the same as we did for Chapter 1.8, the standard administrative penalties. So the writ to judicial review, the bill that defines the way we give notices, all the same. If the board has any questions, I'm ready to answer them. And just to let the board know, I have interim division manager Trent Taylor here as well to answer questions.
Yes, Trent Taylor. Would, do you have anything to add to that?
Trent Taylor, interim division manager, Code Enforcement, Planning, Building Services. I've looked at this extensively and worked with Mr. Mactacy trying to work through this. I think that depending on the outcome here, I'll be working closely with law enforcement to determine if we're possible that we can work with this based on how we're going to respond to this in the field. We'll work that out.
Okay. And Dr. Duhon? What happened to Dr. Duhon? Are you all right with this, too?
Yes.
Okay. And Sheriff Kendall?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now, I think that more options are always going to allow more discretion for enforcement. And the key questions regarding enforcement are always, what are the goals and basically, why are the violations occurring? Now, if we have more ability to look at those two, then we will be able to get more compliance.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Williams?
No comment.
Okay Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate, under Section 7F and G, the typo being, you know, corrected because it was confusing to me. I'm going, which is which? And now I understand. Were there any other corrections? I didn't hear them as we were going through the proposed ordinance.
Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy, I did not notice any other ones besides that one. I'll leave it to others to notice others.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had noticed the discrepancy with F and G, so thank you for the correction on that. The penalty of $10,000 per day potentially for 7G is certainly an attention getter. Is it really necessary? And is that $10,000 per day? It's $10,000 per violation each day is a violation. So that potentially seems a little excessive, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay Supervisor Jurdie?
Yeah, so I appreciate the fact that County Counsel Christian Curtis called me yesterday to tell me about this forthcoming ordinance. But in the conversation, he only mentioned the commercial violations. I don't remember him mentioning the non-commercial violations. And I would like staff to give examples of how that would work. And then I'd like to have a couple of follow-up questions.
Okay. County Counsel?
Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy. Off the top of my head, I'm having a hard time thinking of examples. I welcome Trent Taylor, Christian Curtis to think of some as well. I think that what we had discussed while creating this was that there is a difference, obviously, between commercial and non-commercial. So we wanted to make that divide. We, I didn't think too much about exactly what that would look like, but the idea was, when we discussed this, was that non-commercial activity should not have the same penalty as commercial activity.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, County Counsel?
Thank you. So just, if I could answer the question, but also speak a little bit to Supervisor McCowen's point. So there were some discussions between my office and code enforcement as to what would be an appropriate civil penalty with respect to the commercial activity. The concern was obviously that for a commercial enterprise, there's a little bit of a danger that if the penalty is too low, they might decide simply to pay the fine as the cost of doing business and continue to remain open. And that would fail to have the requisite deterrent value. There had been, as I understand it, some calls in the call center early on reporting that there were some businesses that may have been indicating that they were simply willing to pay whatever fine was associated with violating the order and were simply going to ignore it and remain open. Mr. Taylor can probably speak really to what is going to be the appropriate level of deterrent. You know, we're taking sort of our best stab there at what amount we think would be effective to deter that sort of conduct. In terms of the non-commercial activity, the, so that's really going to be anything that's not going to fall under the commercial umbrella. So I don't know that, as the ordinance was drafted, that we actually expect there to be a lot of scenarios where code enforcement is going to be the appropriate tool to be tackling most types of non-commercial activities. Under this ordinance, there would need to be a notice and 24 hours' opportunity to abate before any sort of penalty would be enforced. In many of the non-commercial situations, the notice and... In many of the non-commercial situations, the 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 notice and abatement regime may not be the most effective way way to be tackling these. You know, for example, if someone has a very large party, you know, a gathering, a non-essential gathering that that is occurring in violation of the order, you know, that may not be something that lasts for more than 24 hours, and therefore, it may be more appropriate for that to be tackled under the 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 law, the auspices of law enforcement or through the other enforcement mechanisms that may be out there. The the concern was simply that if it were limited purely to commercial and that there weren't any sort of safety valve to be able to catch non-commercial, that there might be things that code enforcement could be useful in helping to to address that that were not 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 particularly thought of at this time, but but that we would we'd be sort of closing the door on going forward. I don't know that there was a lot of specific non-commercial activity that that was in mind there. It was it was simply not to have something as high as the the threshold for commercial activity, but not completely closing the door on non-commercial enforcement. And I I hope that answers your question, Supervisor Jordy.
I think it does. I just have one follow-up question, and that is, we've all received a number of complaints, in some cases from lodging operators, of the lodging operators, particularly the Airbnbs most recently, that are still in operation. And I'm curious to hear from staff how they think that this ordinance, do they, I assume they think this ordinance will help them shut those down.
And I'm actually going to, I believe that Trent Taylor can speak to some of that, but there's just a few things that I'd like to comment on 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 that front before before we move too much further. I I do want to say that under the current health officer orders, the vacation rentals should be closed at this time and should not be operated during the period of time that the health officer orders are in place. There was actually a distinction in the order between vacation rentals, which should be closed, and other forms of transient lodging, such as hotels, motels, inns, et cetera, that might be able to remain open for certain types of essential business only. The my office has actually been reaching out to a number of these platforms to request their assistance in making sure that the vacation rentals are are actually complying with the order during this time. And I will say, I understand that Supervisor Williams had independently been reaching out as well, which that assistance is certainly appreciated. We we've had some measure of success with some of the platforms in terms of them at least messaging to to the people on the platform that the health officer order is in effect and that the vacation rental should not be happening during this this timeframe. This this would give an additional tool to allow those vacation rentals that remain open in violation of the order to to allow enforcement as to those particular rentals. And I I will let Trent Taylor speak sort of to the the strategy or the thoughts on that more specifically.
Can you hear me? Trent Taylor, interim manager, code enforcement planning, billing. And and thinking about a strategy related to Airbnbs or vacation home rentals, I think our approach will be investigation based on the information we receive, if we have a report of that, and we would then try to determine, number one, whether it's really occurring and who's responsible for it, and then if necessary, take the appropriate enforcement action by citing or noticing, first noticing and then citing if people don't come into compliance. It's not unlike any other code case that we do, frankly.
All right. Supervisor Jordy, that answers your question? Okay. Very good. Well, we certainly hope that people comply with the health officer's orders and that we don't have these problems, but since we are encountering them, seems like this is an effective way to deal with them. So.
This is Chair?
Chair or Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, sir. I just want to to thank Mr. Curtis with the explanation he gave for the 10,000, not to exceed 10,000, fine for commercial activity. And it brought to mind what occurred during the drought emergency. We did have individuals who just wanted to pay the fines rather than share the unlimited amount of water supply we had. And that occurred in several communities around the county. So I appreciate that very much and will support it.
Chair, hashtag, this is CEO Angelo. We're we're having some difficulties here. We need to take a break at this time. I apologize. We don't have a choice. If we could take a 10-minute break, please?
Okay. Why don't we take a 15-minute break and come back at 22:11, 10:40?
Could you get to the point, we need to move this on?
The point would be, is this potentially an effective means of trying to shut down the vacation home rentals? And if not, what do you recommend to do so? Because I think it's critical.
Thank you. Okay, is that's for county council?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't, I didn't quite hear what was being said there before. We were having, it was a little bit muted on our end.
The question was, is this an effective way of shutting down the Airbnbs?
That is certainly the intent, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, this is Darcy. I'm, I'm not sure at this point that this meeting is live. I think you have a few of us. I don't know that it's activated in the chambers at this point. So I'm not quite sure how to proceed. I'll leave that up to county council. But we, we need the folks in the chambers to activate, for I believe, for this to be live.
Chair Hashjack, we are live in the chambers now. When we came on, the first that we heard was your voice and then Supervisor McCowen. We are live at this moment. However, unfortunately, we have a medical emergency of key staff and we're not going to be able to complete the meeting.
Yes. So CEO Angelo, can we try to finish up this item 8A?
Yes, Chair Hashjack.
Okay, so we had a comment from Supervisor McCowen. Is there a motion on the floor? Supervisor Williams?
I have no comment.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion about item 8A? Supervisor Jirdy?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would ask that the motion for approval reflect a correction of the typo to item 7F, so that it would say non-commercial instead of commercial.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jirdy?
That's incorporate my motion, yes.
Okay, and Supervisor Williams, you agree to that? Okay, so any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to vote all. Is Deputy Clerk there, or should I conduct the?
Chair Hashjack, if you would conduct the roll for the vote, and then we do have Senator Maguire on, so after the vote, maybe we could quickly go to Senator Maguire. We do not, we do not have a clerk of the board. We will have to call this meeting after that. Thank you.
Okay, and let's see, we'll do the vote. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah.
Supervisor McCowen? Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jirdy?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hashjack, yes. Now, okay, so that passed. All right, so I received the text message from Senator Maguire, saying that he totally understood that we were going to have to end our meeting. So I don't know if he's still on the line.
Chair Hashjack, I think he is. If he would like to join us briefly, that would be fine. We're not, that would probably be the best that we can do at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Senator Maguire?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board, Madam CEO and executive staff, grateful to be with you. I completely understand. If you need to adjourn, I'd be happy to come back with you. I'll leave it up to the Chair. Chair, would you like to be able to adjourn, or would you like a very brief update? Again, however you need to be able to urgently deal with the situation at hand, I completely respect that. Mr. Chair?
If you have like a, just a few minutes, you know, three, four minutes, that you could update us on anything, that would be great.
Absolutely, sir. And again, Mr. Chair, to the Board, I'm very grateful to be with you. Know that we're in challenging times, and I want to thank the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors, your county executive, and your public health officer, Department of Public Health, of course, your sheriff, who have all stepped up and shown incredible strengths during these tough days. I know that we have some challenging times in front of us. But as I said the other day, I do believe that Mendocino County's generosity and commitment to community is our biggest strength, and know that it is going to get us through in the months ahead. What I'd like to be able to do, Mr. Chair, is briefly go over statewide view where we're at at this point, talk about some of the numbers, and then some of the programs that have been implemented. I won't spend too much time on the federal programs, as Congressman Huffman did a very eloquent job, and I want to say thank you to the Congressman for his advocacy on behalf of the North Coast each and every day. We had a glimmer of hope this morning, as we're all waking up, with Mendocino County, the nine Barea counties, and many counties throughout Northern California. We're starting to see the early benefits of our shelter-at-home orders. As you know, Mendocino County, the nine Barea counties, as well as Humboldt County, have taken the most aggressive stance for shelter-at-home orders in America. They're also the earliest counties to be able to adapt to a shelter-at-home order. And we are seeing early signs of a slower surge with emergency room visits and hospitalization. That said, we are far from being out of the woods. We know that this surge is still going to be more than significant. And that surge is anticipated to be able to hit here, the North Coast, and remainder of the state of California in the next two to four weeks, which is why we remain in constant contact with hospital leaders throughout the county. We are in constant contact with your executive staff, Mr. Chair, ensuring that the needs of Mendocino County and the North Coast is being met with protective equipment and medical supplies. As you know, the California Office of Emergency Services has also started delivering mutual aid for personal protective gear and other medical equipment throughout Northern California. That mutual aid will continue this week, and it's going to continue in the weeks to come. We're also coordinating with Mendocino County directly on any mutual aid that you may need. And if there is an immediate shortage, for example, with a hospital, when it comes to, I'll give you an example, protective gear, we will work with California Office of Emergency Services, as we're working with them on many other hospitals in our region, to expedite the order to meet the need at the time. We do believe, we being the state, that at a minimum, we're going to be under a shelter-at-home order through May 1st. Ultimately, that will be up to Dr. Duhan in Mendocino County, and your Board, and the county executive. And I again want to say thank you to Dr. Duhan for her incredible work. But I do believe that we should plan on a minimum of another four weeks. Bottom line is, the virus continues to spread across the state. Hospitalizations are continuing to increase. We're lucky that the vast majority of the surge is happening south of us. Between Friday and Monday, California saw a nearly 200% increase in ICU bed utilization, and a nearly 100% increase in patients being hospitalized here in the state. And our top priority remains ensuring that Mendocino County and rural California have the resources they need to combat this virus, and it is an all-hand-on-deck effort. And speaking, speaking of that, as you know, Mr. Chair, and to the Board, the legislature recently passed, two weeks ago yesterday, $1.1 billion spending bill, that is helping us expand hospital capacity across California. We are now moving with the National Guard to be able to get eight field hospitals deployed and built and operational. We're opening up three formerly shuttered hospitals. Our goal is to be able to expand our bed count above our current 74,000 beds that exist in over 400 hospitals. We need to expand our bed count to another 50,000 beds, so approximately 124,000, 125,000 beds. The way we're going to do it is this. We're asking each hospital to be able to expand their capacity by a minimum of 40,000, 40%, excuse me, each, asking each hospital to expand their capacity by 40%. We believe that's going to get us approximately 30,000 beds from pre-existing hospitals. The state is on the hook for the additional 20,000, and we're moving heaven and earth to be able to get that done. And there's going to be more to come on that here in the days ahead of us. I do want to spend a brief amount of time talking about California's homeless population. And that's because the California's homeless population, the homeless population in Mendocino County, one of the most at risk and susceptible to spread. To be able to assist counties, the state is going to provide 100 million across this state to provide counties the resources they need to help slow the spread, stop the spread as well within homeless populations. Mendocino County will see approximately 290,000 immediately to secure hotel rooms throughout the county. These funds are extremely flexible, and already know that your leadership is putting these dollars to work. That's in addition to the 1.5 million in ATAP funding, the traditional homeless funding that the state has advanced. That's in addition to the 1.5 million that will be landing in Mendocino County this year that you can use to be able to combat this virus. Quickly, Mr. Chair, on the issue of unemployment, we've seen over 1 million Californians apply for unemployment over the last 15 days. The state will continue to provide residents with six months of unemployment, a maximum of $450 per week. The federal government, through their coronavirus stimulus bill, will now provide a maximum, an additional $600 per week for four months. So that will be about 1,050 per week for four months, maximum benefit. And we're asking folks, if you're unemployed due to the virus, to go to edd.ca.gov. There's about a three-week turnaround time from time to application submitted, to time to start receiving your first benefit check. We've also opened up, reopened healthcare benefit enrollment through Covered California. If anyone has lost their health benefits due to the virus and their job being lost, you can now enroll on state medical benefits via Covered California through June 30th. This is a special enrollment period. That enrollment period will last through June 30th. All folks need to do is literally Google Covered California and be able to start the enrollment period there. Quickly, on the California National Guard, they have been activated to be able to help expand that hospital capacity that we just talked about. They're also focusing on fortifying food distribution, distribution channels, and expanding food bank operations. The state has pumped in about $6 million last week to help food banks in small communities and large, to be able to purchase additional food. We're going to put another 14 million into food banks here in the state. More to come after that 14 million, but we know that we're going to continue to see a surge of our neighbors who need food banks, which is why you're going to see millions put into the expansion of food purchasing across California. And I'll end it right here, and I won't go into it deeply, because I know the Congressman did. But look, bottom line, if you're a small business owner, you got to go to sba.gov for your low-interest fixed-rate loan. But I know the Congressman has been champion for this. The best benefit, I think, for small businesses in Mendocino County and the North Coast is if you are an employer, 500 employees or less, and you furlough your employees and don't lay them off. Number one, you could receive a tax credit up to 50% off your federal taxes next year. And that loan that will cover 90% of your salaries, that's a guarantee by the feds, that loan will turn into a grant. It's huge. It keeps paychecks coming for those who have been unemployed in this crisis. And I do appreciate the Congressman's hard work with that. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to be able to answer any questions or comments from your Board. And again, I just want to take a moment to say thank you for your leadership in these challenging times, and it's an honor to be able to work with you during this virus.
Well, thank you, Senator Maguire. Since we're dealing with this emergency, medical emergency right now of key personnel, we're not going to be able to continue this meeting past this, so we will not have questions for you. But we certainly appreciate your advocacy for us at the state level, and we know that you're totally connected. I understand that there's going to be a town hall with you again next week with Lake County, next Wednesday night, I believe, and.
You are correct, Mr. Chair. It will be a partnership with Lake and Mendocino County. And again, I want to say thank you for your partnership through this. And this really is a unified approach. Next Wednesday, 6:30.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator, for your time and efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board.
And with that, I really want to say how appreciative I am for the CEO and the Executive Office staff, Dr. Duhan, Sheriff Kendall, and everyone else who, from the county, who is working on this. So, you know, 16, 18 hours a day, nonstop, every day of the week. And, you know, our county is very lucky to have all of you working on our behalf. So thank you. And with that, I'm going to have to close the meeting. All right, so at 10:58, the meeting is adjourned.